Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America, the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silent reflection for our men who service women, men and women throughout the world, and for those who passed away in our community. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. King.
Present.
Mr. Schuster.
Present.
Dr. Rothschild.
Here.
Mr. McAndrew.
Present.
Mr. Smurl.
Here.
I would like to make a motion to take from the table Resolution Number 177 of 2025.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor and a second to take from the table Resolution 177 from 2025 and place it in seventh order for a final vote. This resolution is the transfer of a restaurant liquor license for which a public hearing was held last week. If anyone would like to speak on this piece of legislation, you may do so in fourth order, citizens' participation. On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Guys have it and so move.
I would like to take a motion to take from the table Resolution Number 179 of 2025.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor and a second to take from the table Resolution 179 from 2025 and place it in seventh order for a final vote. This resolution is to appoint the business administrator as the chief administrative officer of the pension plans. If anyone would like to speak on this piece of legislation, you may do so in fourth order, citizens' participation. On the question?
On the question, we got clarification during caucus that this is required, that this individual, someone from the administration, needs to serve on that committee. They don't really have any voting rights or any power over it. They just have to kind of sit on there to sign off on a few things, but so that satisfied me to all be supporting this then.
On the question, we discussed last week, we did make a motion to table because recently, I mean, over the last three years, there's been a vacancy on our pension board for a retired firefighter that has not been filled in three years. And we did table this to hold it up somewhat to get some answers on it, as the administration is asking us to appoint a member to these boards while not seating that retired firefighter. So discussion was had about that, which has been had for some time. I still would like to see that retired firefighter seated in the board, and at this point in time, I don't think there has been any conversation that has been had between the administration, that board, or the fire department union.
On the question also, I don't know if I mentioned that there's a recent audit that if we don't appoint somebody from the administration, we're going to end up with the finding in that audit, which is why I'm going to support this this evening.
Okay, anyone else? Attorney General Wright, is that enough information that we have?
All the information that was just provided is correct. This legislation came to us as a result of an audit finding in the municipal pension audit. The audit staff said that if the city corrected it, it would not be a finding, and so that's the purpose of placing the business administrator on the, as the chief administrative officer, so that we can avoid the finding being in compliance with state law and not risk losing any funds.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Guys have it and so move. Dispense with the reading of the minutes.
Third order, 3A, controllers report for the month ending January 31, 2025. 3B, minutes of the Scranton firefighters' pension commission meeting held January 15, 2025. 3C, minutes of the non-uniform municipal pension board meeting held January 15, 2025. 3D, agenda of the non-uniform municipal pension meeting held February 19, 2025. 3E, minutes of the Scranton police pension commission meeting held January 15, 2025. 3F, minutes of the composite pension board meeting held January 15, 2025. 3G, Lackawanna County Planning Commission subdivision and land development evaluation reports received February 21, 2025.
Are there any comments on any of the third order items? If not, received and filed. Do any council members have any announcements at this time?
I have just one concerning the county reassessment information sessions. There was one held last evening at Riverside Junior Senior High School. All of these are being held at 5:00 and are scheduled to last approximately two hours. The next one is actually scheduled for this evening, North Polkino Middle School in Moscow. Wednesday evening, Abington Heights Middle School. Next Monday, March 3, Carbonell Area Junior Senior High School. Tuesday, March 4, Mid Valley Secondary Center in Troop. Wednesday, March 5, Scranton High School at 5:00 p.m. All of these, Thursday, March 6, Lakeland Junior Senior High School at 5:00 p.m. And then Friday, March 7, at Dunmore Junior Senior High School, all at 5:00 p.m. And that comes from the county reassessment, or from Lackawanna County. And those are, once again, county reassessment information sessions where the public's allowed to ask questions concerning the reassessment, and I'm sure a lot of people have questions about the reassessment. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. King. Anyone else?
Fourth order, citizen participation.
Joan Hoda-Wanis?
Joan Hoda-Wanis, Scranton. Item 5B, the renaming of Rubicon to Routware and extending the term for 60 months or five years. Whose idea was it to extend this term for five years?
I don't know. That's how we received it.
Okay, well, considering the amount of, I won't say BS, let's say misinformation or disinformation that came down with this Rubicon for what, three years now? Why would anybody in their right mind want to give them a contract for five more years? I mean, they're lucky to get even one year as a probationary period. I don't think you should be giving them this 60-month extension. My opinion, if you give them anything, no more than 12 months, and then reevaluate them. Next. I've always been bothered by the fact that after COVID, City Hall never fully reopened. It was one of the last buildings to reopen at all. And we were never really told for a long time what the issue was. Then we got a vague answer, well, it's a security issue. And the most recent thing I've heard is that, well, you see, there's no law preventing a citizen from bringing a weapon into the building, so we need to control access. And my response to that is, number one, get your state representative to fix the law. Have the law amended so that it's illegal to, for someone to bring a weapon into a City Hall. That's number one. But that's not going to solve your problem entirely. We have a police officer here every week. That's fine. But I go to ethics board meetings and SRA meetings and redevelopment authority meetings, which are also after the building, after everybody's gone home. There's no policeman around. So who's kidding whom? If we have a security issue and we're really worried about it, we need to fix the problem. You fix the law, number one, so that it is a crime to bring a weapon into the building. But you're going to have to relook the manning potential of the police department, and if you have to hire more officers and budget for more officers and buy a metal detector, that's what you do. When any, when this building is open for any purpose, whatever time of the day, then you control access that way, as you would at the county courthouse or the federal courthouse. Okay? Let's stop messing around. Those double doors downstairs send a bad message to the rest of the city. You're not welcome in this building. Oh, you need to get in, call, and we'll make you an appointment, if we have the time or the interest to call you back. And Frank Voldenberg is the only one that answers the phone and calls back. Most of the other offices, and so get the mayor to fix this problem correctly. I'm tired of it, you know? Times change, situations change. If we need a larger police force to accommodate the security for this building, do it. But you're, you're just toying with us. You can get into the building. Hey, when's the ethics board going to meet? There's no cop around. So let's do it right. And I think there are other reasons why we don't open the building between 8:30 and 4:30 p.m., and it's not just security. When is the St. Patrick's Day Parade parade? March 8?
Yes.
Okay. I'm looking forward to that. And DPW and the police department and the fire department, they always do a great job preparing for that, so I don't expect any problems. Negotiations for DPW's unit contract still ongoing?
Yes.
And the audit, I hope, is marching along?
Slowly.
Yeah, very slowly. Good news, we shouldn't have any cold blues within the next two weeks. Channel 16 says above-average temperatures. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan. Bob Bolus?
Evening, Council. Bob Bolus, Scranton. I totally agree with Joan on what she suggested. You know, she's been all over the world as a former veteran, and she knows what she's talking about. She's seen it in many other countries, and I strongly would suggest we take her recommendation. The thing I want to look at here tonight is, first of all, Trump, as far as I'm concerned, has taken our country called America back. And he will end Biden's wars that Biden contributed to and spent billions of dollars for nothing, not counting how much money went in their pockets. And next thing I have is any more consideration on removing the Biden signs from the expressway or Spruce Street? By council, have you given any more consideration about making a motion to remove them?
There's been no motion made.
Okay. And now, this is the interesting part of the evening. I think the Democratic Party chairman needs to take action against Gahan, what Gahan pulled with a news conference the other day, trying to suggest or endorse an individual that's going to be one of his yes-men. Okay, we have a system here, whether it's the Republican Party or the Democrat Party, on how someone's elected, or how would I put it in other terms, is recommended for the position. They vote on it, they choose who they believe should be there, and then it's up to the judicial to pick three candidates. Not have a sitting commissioner who hit us with a 33% tax, who has skunked the city of Scranton, and I did that when I put his face on the side of a trailer in a skunk's body, what he did here in Naug Park, and I could go on and on and on. Hit us with the tax, 33% tax. Now he wants to choose his own yes-man, afraid of having a self-thinker appointed that doesn't agree with his dictatorial ego on issues that we need, that somebody else would suggest to the benefit of the people in this community. We can't have that. We're a society, we're an open society in our government, and we shouldn't have somebody just pick and choose and try and influence the decision, especially the Democratic Party and the chairman, to circumvent the process that's been there for God knows how many years that's been done. I mean, it's just, I went to the meeting the other day, and I stood there and I listened to this. And to be very honest with you, it turned my stomach. I've been involved with politics, I've ran for offices in this community, and to sit there and see this taking place and holding a news conference like this is the way it's going to be, whether you people like it or you don't, I'm going to ram down your throat what I want, what you don't want, we don't give a damn. And that's what turned me off, to sit there and see this insult to our democracy that we have. We have rules and regulations that we've all had to live by. Gahan doesn't believe in that. He didn't believe it when he sat here, when he made statements and caused a lot of problems. He created an issue when he had the sheriff grab my left shoulder, which tore the ligament of my shoulder. And I've been going under treatment, I've been to Florida with it, I've been to the VA, I've been all over. What do I do next? They haven't decided, but I'm now putting a new shoulder in. But because of his arrogance, when I was sitting down, said I was causing a commotion and had the sheriff grab me, I thought I got stabbed in the back. And I've been going through a living hell over it. But this is what a dictator does, or attempts to believe he's a dictator. It's not going to happen. It's not going to happen in Scranton, and I can guarantee you, it's not going to happen with him in Lackawanna County if we have anything to say about it, and I got a lot to say about it. Gahan will follow the procedure, just like everybody else does, just like each and every one of you would have to do. He's no damn different, and we'll make a change. Thank you, gentlemen, and lady.
Thank you, Mr. Bolus. Les Spindler?
Go ahead, Mr. Warren Meyer.
Meeting of Council, Les Spindler, city resident homeowner. Well, since Bob brought up Trump, I don't know what he's listening to, but on the news last Friday night, he's been bashing Joe Biden for years and years and years, saying what he did to our country. And Trump said on day one, he's going to fix the economy. Well, last Friday, it was on the news that 53% of the people polled are unhappy with what he's doing with the economy already. And they're going to town hall meetings, saying how upset they are with what's going on. And he called President Zelensky of Ukraine a dictator? He's the dictator. He thinks he could go around the Constitution and do whatever he wants. He forms his own department of, what is it, Department of Government Efficiency? That's efficient, like making over 2 billion people lose their jobs? How do you run a country with less people than we've been doing for, since I've been on this earth? So I don't know what's going on. And 54% of the people have an unfavorable opinion about what Elon Musk is doing. How is the president able to make a phony department that we never had before and put somebody in charge of it that wasn't elected by the people? He wasn't approved by Senate, but he's laying off millions of people and putting them out on the unemployment line. Although, I think they're going to sue, and Trump has lost, you know, court cases already. I think he's going to lose these, and I think these people will get back to work, and I hope they do. Okay, moving on. 5D, a resolution planned for new land development located on 1,000 block of Wheeler Avenue. Does anybody know what land, is that the corner of Ash Street and Wheeler? Where Hiles used to be?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Do you know what they're going to put there?
I believe there's apartments upstairs and then a commercial business down there.
Hiles used to be a great place. I used to go there quite often. On the Monday nights, it was packed there. There was a singer named Bobby Ross. He was there every Monday night, and it was packed every Monday. They were the good old days. Next thing. Last couple of weeks, I couldn't make it here. I heard more talk about the pools in Naug. And I know you disagree, Mr. King, but I have a good authority from a recreation authority member that the city ran out of money, and there's only going to be a three-foot pool, no lap pool. So we'll see who's right. I hope you're right, but the recreation authority deals with the park, and I think they know what's going on. Lastly, I was happy to see that the city's going to fight against the gas company with their rate hike request. It's just, these utilities are out of control. They just want rate hike after rate hike, and they're, I've said for years, they're killing our roads. They make pave cuts, and they don't fill them in good. The prime example, on Dorothy Street, in front of a house on 1720 Dorothy, the water company made a huge pave cut a couple of weeks ago. They, the whole street blocked off. It's probably as wide as that table or maybe that long, and they filled it in. It's terrible. It's from the curb out to the street almost. And the people, they won't park right there, they're afraid their car's going to sink in, because it's settling already, and you have to go around it, because you can't go over it. It's like, on the edges where it meets the regular road, there's some areas where it's four or five inches lower than the rest of the road. They just throw it in there, and they don't know what they're doing. And it's a safety hazard, let's say a night. I mean, I know it's there, but people that don't know it's there, if they go over that, probably going to do a lot of damage to their cars. It's like that all the time. I've come here year after year saying, use utilities, get away with murder, and something's got to be done. I mean, I don't know what we can do, but, all right, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Spindler. Ron Elman?
Mr. Voldenberg, with that 1720 Dorothy Street, can we send that over to the administration? I know we have a different pave cut process this year. We have a company that's doing the pave cuts. Can we send this address over to them and just ask them to just walk through the process of what the new pave cut, how the city's going to address these pave cuts as we move forward?
I will, sir, and I'll also report it to the water company.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Council, Scranton may not be the birthplace of graft and corruption, but it certainly is its home. We have the New York branch of Tabby Hall here, known locally as the Good Old Boys. Good old boys must have access to money, favoritism, good lawyers to sweep things under the rug around here. Even bad car accidents, like my friend that got run over by a speeding car a few years ago. Nobody would do a thing. I guess it's four years ago. It's a shame. When I heard about it, I was in Gooseboro in a bar, and we were talking about it one night. Tony Santoli told me to phone Bill King about my allegations. So I did, and Mr. King didn't seem to want to talk to me about it. I guess he might be a closet good old boys that I don't know about, but I won't ever get involved with them. Standing up here for 20 years just killed my chances of being a good old boy in this city. There's good old girls, too. We got one that's the mayor. No one in this government seems to care about this outright illegal going on with Joe Cochran renting city property. You know, maybe 50 feet away is all the free city land that Pendott could ever use for equipment, and there's something shady went on while they wanted to rent land when it's already there a block away on the other side of the bridge. You know? To get off the subject a little bit, some low-life, lying piece of crap, and my neighbor, one of my neighbors complained twice that my Cadillac was abandoned. I drive it continuously, not every day, in Zipple. It got towed. Nobody, nobody seemed to care about the law about it. Nobody came to ask me if I want to move it or so. It was on the street, parked legally. On Troop Street, there's the same bunch of cars parking the same places. That's where I parked it, because I have another car at home. I drove most of the time, the little convertible. When my son was hospitalized in New Angola, I must have drove 20 times in this Cadillac down there. There's not a thing in the world wrong. I probably spent $1,000 on repairs in the last year or so. An uninsured driver hit me three years ago. I spent over $2,500 of my money fixing it, and the city towed it as an abandoned car. You know, is there anyone out there that thinks that I could receive some judicial justice around here? I don't know. It seemed like favoritism and who you know, like the good old boys rules. Before I get told to shut up and sit down, let me say one thing. Why in the world would any intelligent being want to jump on a sinking ship like Goggins? I can't understand that mayor of Dunmore. It's unbelievable that somebody of position, and maybe he's a good old boy, I don't know. And all you Democrats, I guess you need to vote this year, vote often, or we might end up with the new administration if you guys don't let go of this one. Thank you.
Mr. Elman, I don't know what you were referring to, Mr. Elman. If you want to speak to me after the meeting, I'd be glad to. I don't ever recall you approaching Mirror, asking me something, but I'm glad to.
I didn't want to be argumentative, but I said it, you just didn't seem to want to speak to me.
If you want to speak to me about some issue with the tree, or I don't even know what you're talking about, but I'll gladly speak to you after the meeting, if you're interested in doing that.
No, I'm not trying to say something derogatory about the conversation, but we didn't talk.
I don't remember having a conversation with you.
We didn't talk a minute, did we?
I don't ever remember having a conversation.
Well, it was a couple of weeks ago, maybe two weeks ago, you know?
Where did that, where was this?
Tony told me he'd talked to you, because.
I didn't speak, Tony Santoli?
Briefly, what started this was that beautiful 100-year-old tree Cochran cut down for Christmas. Yeah, they told me, for Christmas money. I was asking this room, who paid for it? Nobody cared. I guarantee you Cochran didn't write a check for $2,000. The city or the county or somebody in Pendott paid for that. That's what goes on all around here, this underneath graft and corruption that is tolerated. Thank you.
Thank you. We will look in, I will look into that.
Alan Lucas?
Good evening, counsel. Alan Lucas, Scranton resident, IFF Local 60 Union President, representing Scranton firefighters. I had to leave last week. I just wanted to touch on, Mr. McAndrew did basically summarize what I was looking to address with the outside-the-city responses. We just want a seat at the table. The union just wants to sit and be able to discuss any concerns that we have. We're not getting that. So the city administration still hasn't discussed the responses with us, with Local 60, after two documented requests via email. Again, we just wanna discuss what their plan is and highlight any concerns that we have and maybe work out a resolution so we don't have to go into litigation over it. But as of right now, still don't have a response to that. With that said, January, if you guys could look into this, please. January 10th, 2025, Engine 2 was dispatched automatically, automatic dispatch because there was a working structure fire in Greenwood, Music. It was the same manner as what you brought up last week regarding that email. Old Forge, Moscow, Greenwood, and the airport. Can counsel find out if the administration had a crew come in to backfill while Engine 2 was operating in Greenwood? And report whatever you guys find out to us because we'd like to know if what the city has discussed with not E-Board members is true and that they are going to backfill when units are called outside the city. Specifically, did they restaff for the three members who were deployed to Greenwood for the fire? Or did they leave Local 60 members and Scranton taxpayers short-staffed while Engine 2 was in Greenwood? So if you guys could find that out and report that back. Thank you. As for the audit, I understand that the legalities of, for the pension board audit, you guys have to push that forward. We, Local 60, the retirees, we really appreciate everybody's efforts to attempt to get an answer for the same thing about seating Mr. Morgan. So I really do appreciate that. We understand completely. You guys have to follow the laser of the law and there's zero issue, but we do very much so thank you for attempting to get an answer. I assume you didn't get one. I'm sure you'll report it out. Understanding that that's an audit finding and to be able to have the administration basically, because you guys are able to push this through, to get that basically wiped off and have it not be a documented finding is nice. I know it is not, but it would be really nice if an audit finding was not having a fully seated pension board. It's not an audit finding, but maybe then the administration would act on it. As of right now, the city still has not sat Tommy Morgan. They haven't discussed anything with Local 60 this past week, the pension board, or Mr. Morgan. That's all I have for today. Thank you very much. I appreciate the time.
Thank you, Mr. Lucas.
Mr. Waldenberg, can we make sure we send those questions over to the administration?
I will.
All right, thank you.
Good evening, counsel. Lee Morgan. You know, I hope the residents of Scranton would pay some attention to what I'm gonna say here tonight. I think it's pretty important. I think the council should pay a little attention to, but I don't know if that's possible. And I don't know if the mayor can pay attention either, but we have to look at Pennsylvania American Water. And when President Wexler was on council and the sale of the Scranton Sewer Authority, we need to take a good, hard look at the water and sewage rates that the residents of the city of Scranton are enduring at this time. Had a conversation with somebody, as a matter of fact, yesterday with two children. And he's an elderly man like myself, 65 years old, paying $250 a month for water and sewer. And he said, Lee, I only take two showers a week. Can't afford the water. And then we have to look at our elected leaders and all the shams they pulled on the residents over an extended period of time. And I have to ask how the PUC ever allowed the sale of the Scranton Sewer Authority to go through and how these rate increases are just devastating the quality of life and public health and how we have an anemic council and mayor, PUC and a governor who are allowing this abuse to take place. Now, Pennsylvania American Water is buying $3 billion worth of assets across the country every year. They bought $1 billion worth last year. The Sewer Authority was never intended to pay pension debt. Okay? The pensions are unsalvageable in this city and it's time for the residents to realize that. They have to be turned over to the state of Pennsylvania. But not even the state of Pennsylvania's pension plans are solvent because we've been lied to by our government continually over my entire lifetime. And when you see the crime that's been committed by our own government against its own citizens, I mean, you look at Pittsburgh, there's 90 parts per trillion of plastic in the water. What's the rate here? The poverty rate in Lackawanna County is 17%, but nationally it's 11.5%. We've got a government that fails to represent the people in any way whatsoever. You know, after coming here for 40 years, I can understand why ECTV has blocked me and done all the underhanded things because we're dealing with people. You know, when you leave here and you're in the streets and you're an ordinary person, you may be a decent human being. But when you're sitting there and you have no information, no facts, and you're trying to act like you're intelligent and ask questions of parties who come here before the council, and they're so far over your head, it's ridiculous. And you try to ask questions that make you look intelligent, and there's nothing wrong with that. You could be, you could be a doctor, you could be a lawyer, you could, you could be whatever, and you can think you're fairly intelligent, but this whole system has collapsed. We have consultants doing everything, but you know, the one thing we've gotta take away from this is that, that people can't afford to live here anymore. And you sit here like it's just another day. When you walk around this city and you look at the downtown, there is no downtown. It's just a vast, humongous parking lot. The greatest and cruelest joke of all is Doherty Park. There's no, you took a building that had an opportunity to be a small business incubator, the Scranton Lace Building, and turn it into a complete joke. Just have to see where this city is, and it's dying right under our feet. And we have elected people that can't seem to understand what needs to be done, and it's been going on. I've been coming here 40 years. I listened to council presidents tell us that they had a plan, one failed plan after another, and the population base. I'm really happy because I told my children to leave and only one's still here. The rest are making more money than you could ever imagine. I mean, and they're college educated. I had to take them out of the city to get them educated and put them in the Abingtons because the Scranton School District was such a terrible thing. And Pat McCabe, the Assistant Superintendent, one time was such an educator, and we had quality people. Politics has killed it all.
Thank you.
Good evening, counsel. I have a couple of files if you don't mind.
Thanks.
I do have some questions for this listener as well. Last time I was here, gonna be talking about the same thing, about the UGI rate hike. I saw that you guys did submit a letter in the docket for the UGI rate hike. Was that, now that is different than a motion to intervene. Is there a reason why you only submitted a letter rather than a motion to intervene on the rate hike?
Yes, there is. But we did, they did grant hearings. We just don't know whether that yet.
Yes. So on the top of that, you'll see that they did push, at this most recent PUC meeting on February 20th, they pushed back the rate hike to at least October 28th for investigation so that they can have those meetings. But I think as representatives of folks here in Scranton who are like struggling to keep up with the rising inflation, rising rates in utility bills besides just the gas company, you guys should be putting forward a motion to intervene on behalf of the constituents of Scranton. I went through here, I took a little bit of, there's a screenshot on there. The first figure is from the UGI Corporation Annual Report. This is specifically for the utility section, which is basically roughly split halfway between the Pennsylvania company that they own and the one in West Virginia. So if you look at these numbers, roughly half of these numbers come from the UGI Gas Utility Company in Pennsylvania. The margins they're making on there is $924 million for last year. So asking for a rate hike, in my opinion, is absolutely horrendous. They're giving dividends of $1.50 a share to their stockholders, so they have plenty of money to share around the stockholders, but they don't have money to reinvest. They say that they need to take it from us. 73% of the rate hike is going to be coming from residential folks. As someone mentioned earlier, 17% of, you know, their area is low income, can't afford these rate hikes. Going through the documents a little bit more, they specifically talk about the, if you look on the bottom of that table, that second paragraph, they list all the reasons why their profit margins have gone up last year, specifically pointing to rate hikes, the last rate hike. So they're already making margins from the last one, they shouldn't be having to do this one, as well as the weather normalization adjustments, which is when it's warmer outside, they charge you more money for not using the gas. So it's a hedge against climate change. You could see a whole bunch of quotes on the second page about their references to climate change and how it impacts their business. So I looked up the weather from their methodology as close as I could find. They quote 15-year average from the National Weather Service. And for Avoca, which is the local National Weather Service location, it was 4.3 degrees cooler in January, which meant that folks should be getting proportional lowering on their bill. The cooler it gets, the lower your bill is supposed to be. So you get a percentage off. They say if it's 3% cooler, then you'll get a 3% deduction on distribution. This is just a distribution charges. 15% cooler, 4.3 degrees, according to the National Weather Service. I didn't receive a 15% rebate. I only received a 1%. I encourage you all to look at your bills as well. So they have all these ways of trying to nickel and dime your constituents. And rather than just asking for a public meeting, I urge you guys to put forward a motion to intervene, which is a little bit different. Everyone in the audience, I have just a couple of these on me, but if you go online, nepadsa.org/ugi.
You need to address counsel this way.
If any constituents would like to fill out a comment for a proposed rate increase, there's the docket number already on here, as well as the check bark for gas. You fill in your comment, and on the last page, there's an address to send to, and you have to date and sign. You can find this, I put this together, you could find this on my organization's website, So I urge counsel to continue following up with this.
Thank you.
Attorney Gilbreth, can you look into motion to intervene? Appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you for that information.
That's all for our sign-in sheet.
Tom Coymanuka. Kiff Card update. Are they being held for a pre-election news propaganda, possibly? Good news to report to the voters of the kindness by delaying them through last year and including the holiday season? Any update on the Naog light contract payment and why it skipped counsel? Moving on in a bit of an editorial. Yesterday was the beginning of the fourth year of the war in Ukraine. This is day 1098. We have as a country under Biden, trickled in, half-supported the people of Ukraine piecemeal. Under this, we have slowed delivery, restricted the reach, and stated we want Ukraine to fight only in Ukraine and not strike out at Russian soil as we constantly claimed fear of elevation. And then said, don't attack the refineries because it may cause higher gas prices at home, and that might hurt Biden's election chances. The US has been very good at making fake lines on the map to stop such military action and lose wars. The 38th parallel is a good example of such a line. The USA has always had the ideal to stand up for what's right, democratic, and human dignity. Ukraine gave up its nuclear weapons in the Budapest Memorandum in 1994. This agreement provided Ukraine with security assurances from the United States, United Kingdom, and Russia in exchange for its commitment to become a non-nuclear weapons state. Under this, it turned over its nuclear weapons and it diminished its security for our assurances. We now, as a country, are siding in the UN with Russia, Belarus, Hungary, and North Korea, bastions of American ideals. We now have moved from a mob mentality and extortion and blackmail, a protection racket. And I'm uncomfortable with this. We have exchanged what is right for what gives us the right profit. Enough on that, as everyone has an opinion. I would like to thank whoever decided it was the right thing to fly the Ukrainian flag. Seems that Tatask is the maintenance staff here, and it would be nice if they were trained on flag protocol or maybe had a cheat sheet. The flags are staffed in a simple order: the USA flag, other nations, state and city. Yesterday, the flag of Ukraine was the lowest flag in order. Both the state and city were above the flag of another nation's flag. And this, and the city flag was actually above the state's flag. Maybe we can do better next time. Off to money. It seems that handling multiple loans as outright gifts of money to the UFS and other nonprofits for a university with over $300 million is perfectly fine. Handing over $65 million is no concern, but us getting $65 million from the rescue plan was manna from heaven and an amazingly large sum. The numbers are the same, but what is massive for some is nothing for others. Sometimes I question the priorities. Last, I mentioned about the public terminals last week that were supposed to be installed in the lobby as part of the Open Gov proposal. But I was not proposing exposing the city's security. The Lennon License and Inspection at least has someone near it to observe it, even if it's badly observed. But it is still unsecure. Both machines have front-facing USB ports that would allow insertion of a virus. And they are, and already, on the network inside the building, which bypasses a lot of the building's firewalls. Turning off the USB ports in the operation system is useless, as Windows Plug and Play still identifies them when they're turned off. I would suspect they're part of the main board also and can't be disconnected. The two ways it can be handled is putting silicone in the USB ports to prevent use, as it's also non-conductive and is often done, to prevent USB ports from being accessed. But more important would be to surround the physical access to the desktop. A simple plywood box that a monitor could sit on would be fine. A few slots cut in it for the cable, mouse keyboard, a small metal screen for ventilation, and it's secure where you cannot get at the box itself. All you need is the keyboard, the mouse, and the monitor. Having that box open to access is a security risk, and it needs to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Waldenberg, would you please share these concerns with the IT department?
I will, Mr. McAndrew.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, counsel. Dave Dobson, resident taxpayer. Now on Scranton, Pennsylvania, probably 12 years already. Non-tax exempt state should replace excessive loss. Our state constitution requires cities to host tax-exempt institutions, and many of them are essential. However, after a certain point, the state should replace the lost tax revenues for property tax. And it's just, what are we going to do if those two hospitals have to go tax-exempt again? Because obviously, they haven't been profitable. The company's trying to ditch them. They're even talking about closing them. So we can't keep pushing that up. I think we lost two or three points when it went down from 35 to 33, and that was quite a while ago. So now, what's it going to go up to? 42 or 43? And add a couple more, and the next thing you know, we're at 45? Too few people are carrying this with property that is taxable. And that's all, and we're not achieving our financial security. So beware of the clawbacks, because, like I said, $80 million last week was deducted from New York accounts. And by the way, they were saying that these AAA hotels or four, five-star hotels, or whatever you want to call them, were getting double. They were getting $12.50 a month to house these immigrants, and there's only a couple hundred left. So, you know, it's, $8 million was saved by one of Doge's excursions there, and it was reported as 8 billion. So there's extreme exaggerations going on there. And 21 people today, there was a Department of Government Efficiency in Washington, and Doge took it over, and 21 people of the original employees resigned. 21 people, they said, "This is totally immoral, and we don't want to be a part of it. We're gone." Now, on security, back, it was quite a few years ago in Hamline, a guy had a junkyard and a decrepit property right next to a little resort. It might have been like based on religion or something, a religious order, but it was their little, you know, resort. And they took his land off of him, and he got a little put out about that. And he showed up with an AR, and he smoked three people. So I am total support. The first thing I did when I had to say to Kyle, when he was president, I, we came back, and there was no police assigned, and I said, "Where's the policeman?" Because I would support it, you know? And actually, in my opinion, instead of a whole bunch of doors, there should be a police detail at the front door, and they can see that your intentions are sincere. And, you know, you could be checked over and let go about your business. But also with Doge, they fired the bird flu, which is spreading all over. Measles is in Mexico now, there's a whole bunch of people. And they also fired the National Nuclear Regulatory Commission. And they were calling them back because they safeguard our nuclear and thermonuclear force, which is 1,000 times more than an atom bomb. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, counsel. Lynn Labraski, homeowner, business owner, Scranton. I just wanted to start off by saying that I had a pleasure of stopping by a new program that opened up in our community. It's called the Providence Pregnancy Center, which is a really fantastic extension to some programs that we've had in place for many years. I don't know if a lot of people are aware, but St. Joseph's Center does run a shelter for pregnant women, and that's been in place for a long time. Then they also have a program, which is for mothers and their babies, where they can live for up to 18 months and transition into permanent housing and also gain life skills and different things like that. So this program that opened up recently is an extension of that, and it's offered to women that are pregnant and have a child. So that was, that was really good to hear that they got that going. It's a really nice place. If anybody has an opportunity, they should stop by and see what they're doing over there. I did read on social media that there was a lot of men out there that are single dads. Then there's no programs, I guess, for single dads, so maybe in the future, we could work on something like that in the community. But I did want to mention that St. Joseph's also has a baby pantry, as well as the new Providence Pregnancy Center. And I believe that is open to anyone, whether they're a single mom, single dad, it doesn't really matter. So if anyone out there isn't aware of these programs, they're really good programs. I personally worked at Mother-Infant for about 10 years, quite a few years back. And the new Providence Pregnancy Center is really a good, a good thing to put in our community. The other thing I wanted to talk about was, and it's been brought up for several weeks now, I reached out to Penda today in Dunmore regarding the Elm Street Bridge project. I did find out that it is a city project, and it's being overseen by federal and state. I was also told that they did a study on the project, which took place, this has been going on, I guess, for five years, the planning of this project. I guess when they did the study, they did it during COVID, so the traffic pattern was not as congested then as it would be now. So that doesn't make a lot of sense to me, because if you, if they knew about this project for five years, and then they did a study during COVID, which would have been about five years ago, then how would the traffic pattern be the same when nobody was driving on the roads at that time? So I asked a bunch of questions, I got some answers, and they mentioned that there was, I guess, consultants that were paid and studies that were paid for. And now, the delay on the traffic light is 45 seconds. With the traffic lights being so old, they cannot get into the, I guess it's called like a gearbox, that they have to change it to make it a longer green light or whatever. So that's what they're working on now. Again, five years of planning a project, and this is being done after the project started, just doesn't make a lot of sense to me. So if we could get like answers, I'm like looking to find out like who, what, when, where, why, how much was spent on the study. As a matter of fact, I'd like to know if we could get a list of all studies that have been done in the last five years, and how much was spent on those studies, how much was spent on consultants for those studies, and also, what were the outcomes of the studies? Because I'm not seeing any information about that. So if we could, if we could find out about that, that would be great. And then I did ask about the lines being painted on the roads, because they're not visible, they're not right, there's still cars stopped on the tracks, it's really dangerous. And again, we're using police resources and vehicles to direct traffic, so I don't know if in with the project money for the, for the bridge, are the police officers being paid overtime, or is, was that budgeted in to the plan? Or is that extra money that the city's paying now that it's, it's a mess down there? And the lines, they're not going to be painting anytime soon. I did see them painting lines on Kaiser Avenue, so the weather's good for that now. But they don't intend, from what I gathered, information that I gathered today, they don't intend on painting lines anytime soon because they're more concerned about the traffic lights right now. But again, we have, I mean, I suggest it, like maybe should they have closed that bridge down for a week as a test run, just to see the congestion and see how the traffic was going? But now it's in place, and everything's a mess, so I don't know how they're going to straighten that out. So I have a lot of questions. I mean, I was always taught there's no stupid questions, just stupid answers, so I'm going to keep getting up here and asking questions every week. I'm out of time. So you don't get a lot of time up here, but, and then also, the ARP of funds, if we could find out if, I don't know if there's a list out yet of where that money went, who got grants.
All of that information is online.
It is online now?
Yes, and the Penda has been down. All of, all of the corrections for the traffic patterns should be complete by the end of this week. And all of the, if you want all of these studies and all of that stuff, you're asking for documentation, so you're going to have to put in a right-to-know for all of that. We just can't go and print out 5,000 pages. So you'd have to put a right-to-know in because it's documentation, okay?
Yeah. I'll be happy to do a right-to-know. The last several right-to-knows I did, I didn't get any answers, but I'll certainly try.
And then Ms. Labraski.
Yes.
Last week, you brought up some questions about West Grant and Little League.
Yes.
I am in communication with them quite often, and you brought up the scoreboards, so I felt like it was a good time to say this. When it comes to the scoreboards, they usually have a business donate for the scoreboard, so.
Okay.
If anybody out there has a business that would like to donate for a scoreboard for West Grant and Little League, they are offering that a business can sponsor that scoreboard.
I appreciate you bringing that up. I know last year, they needed a defibrillator and, you know.
They have a wish list.
My husband and I, as a small business, we donate it for that, but yeah, if anybody's out there and they could donate, perfect. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hello, counsel. Rick Little, Scranton. "To live outside the law, you must be honest," fortunately, to quote absolutely sweet Marie. I see a lot of people talking about things when they don't really know what's going on. This thing about, you know, people talking about the international and federal and state and county and city. We're here for the city of Scranton. I'm interested in the city Scranton Housing Authority. I know how it came to be, I know, I can see how it changed, but little tricks happened over the years. And I'm not exactly sure, but when I look at the city of Scranton, there should be a revenue stream for inspecting that place. Instead, what they do, they, you know, after hiring consultants and, you know, experts and doing all these legal maneuvers, they, they move it out to a private, you know, a private thing in almost everything. It's like, it's like the sewer, it's like the water, it's like everything, everything, like the Area Agency on Aging, when, when they had the American Rescue Act money. I have a life of doing, doing grant applications, art, art grant applications during COVID, when I heard about the America, the American Rescue Act, ERAP. I got a lot of pressure, because from the county, no one knew where you even applied for it. And a lot of people had a bad feeling that, oh, a citizen is applying for it and not one of our people on our board who has a job getting paid, you know, $70,000, $100,000 as, as a grant-writing expert or a law, a lawyer, a law firm. They don't, they don't want other people. That's why I'm homeless. That's why I'm evicted, because I wrote the grant. And, and then for the ERAP, and it was accepted. And I have all kinds of evidence, you know, they talk about evidence, but, you know, the district attorneys and, and basically, a lot of people in the judicial branch of the government, they did not want, want that to become any sort of a precedent. I did right-to-knows, you know, I did FOIAs. And in the end, the arbitrator of the right-to-knows is the Court of Common Police. And I hate to say it, but, but, you know, it's a fixed thing, just one little line, one little line, you know? You can run for a magistrate judge without being a lawyer in Pennsylvania. It's one of six states that allows you to do that. But they have caveats in there where, oh, you have to be in good standing with the bar association. Well, that's where the whole problem, everything that happened is with bar associations that came into our country from England, who we owed a lot of money to. This is the international thing, around the 1860s. First one was in Illinois, they were in New York, and now they're all over. And it's a mystery thing. What is the bar? And, you know, when I go to the code enforcement inspector, and they tell me, "Well, if I want to know, I have to do a right-to-know to find out what's going on." This is a revenue stream. There is not a certificate of occupancy in any Scranton Housing Authority buildings. And I've gone through it, they give me, it doesn't exist. That's a revenue stream that, that could be great for Scranton. It should be Scranton, because the history shows how Scranton Housing Authority was made by, and developed by former mayor J.F. Durkin after 1926. He ran it for 50 years.
Thank you.
Oh.
Anyone else?
Good evening, counsel. Mark Morgavage, Scranton. Counsel, just have a question about the reassessment. I don't know if, is anyone familiar with how Luzern County was done 15 years ago about their, about, in Wilkes-Barre City in particular? Anyone familiar with it? Well, in Wilkes-Barre City, they actually kept the old value. So they didn't honor the reassessment. So I only suggest that because maybe in Scranton, if, if that was to be considered, maybe it wouldn't be as impactful to the senior citizens that probably will get hit the most. So, but if you want to check it out, they still do it to this day. I know myself having a property in Wilkes-Barre that I pay one value to the city, one assessed value on the city, what they claim, and then on the county and the school is the reassessment amount. So just something to think about. Don't know how that was done, or exactly why it was done, but it was done. So I didn't know if anyone was familiar with it. But additionally, does counsel have any authority to open those doors downstairs? Because if not, I'm not going to talk about it. It'd be falling on deaf ears.
All of the daily maintenance and running of all the city buildings belongs to the administration, not counsel.
So there's nothing counsel could send down to them to force, force their hand?
We've asked before, and it's not our call.
Okay. All right, thank you.
All right.
Good evening, counsel. Mike Mancini, Scranton. Last evening, I was at the assessors' town hall at Riverside High School. It was very informative. It was brought forward by Tyler Technologies and Pat Tobin, who is the assessor for the county. It's very informative. It's very informative. I would recommend that each one of you, as you get time, go out. It runs two hours, okay? Unfortunately, uh, there's only one in Scranton, even though we carry 55% of the county tax burden. That's, that's going to be one. He also agreed to put it on ECTV. I asked a lot of questions. All my questions were answered. One of the big saving graces here is properties where people are still paying for land and have dwellings on them and are not paying their fair share. Knowing that they're not paying their fair share, they could have put up a garage or even a structure of some sort, but they're not paying their fair share. There's no statute of limitations. They can go back. Back in June of last year, Solicitor Gilbride mentioned that there's thousands of them. Tyler Technologies agrees. We go back, get monies that are actually owed to us and try and get a little forward. You know, a $200 tax increase for the, from the county, from a previous administration was unfair because they stacked up bills, $28 million. It's unfortunate, right? However, if they go back towards them, that will clear up a good portion of the, the debt itself. As far as it being weighted out properly, yes and no. I have a lot of experience originating mortgages and a lot of experience with tax collection as well. I could tell you that there's going to be good and bad when it comes to this assessment. There's going to be people that are going to be happy, there's people that are not going to be happy. I feel as if taxes in, in the city of Scranton are actually going to drop, and they're going to be weighted more towards the rest of the county. It has to be fair and balanced. That's the law, right? However, what's not fair and balanced is the fact that we have people just paying for land without a structure and no insight and no willingness to go after something that's just sitting there. Something that also is just sitting there is a hotel tax that we could actually get $3 million from on a yearly basis. The county charges 7%. They're getting their monies. You know, $3 million, I could pay for the pool that Paige promised, but she's not going to deliver on. Second thing I want to talk about is the roads. You know, she was online on Friday, and she said that the roads were just a little torn up, not much, just a little. And I want to read you actually some of the comments from that, if I could bring it up here. They're, they weren't good. You know, I agree with, you know, other people here that these roads are atrocious. They're not just a little torn up. Um, let me read these to you. "The roads were just a little roughed up. You wouldn't need square patterns. Our roads look like this because you finally saw your shadow." Thanks, Bucks County Page. That's from me. "This is the biggest lie I've ever heard. You've been the mayor for years now. You're not good at it." "Well, the route from Clark Summit to the city of Scranton is nice and smooth. It must be an election year." Hey, um, let me see here. You know what? I'm not going to read this. There's just too disparaging things to remind us of a poor administration. And yet, somebody's running against her that bankrupted a steam company and was an executive director and sold her most important asset, the sewer authority. In my opinion, we could do better. The city of Scranton deserves better. The people of Scranton deserve better. You know, there's going to be three chairs that are up for election this year. Choose the person, not the party. You know, when you part, when you vote upon, upon party lines, you have party problems. Do you mean it's don't? Vote for the person, not the party. Good evening, Council.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Fifth order, five motions.
Mr. King, do you have any motions or comments?
Um, a couple. It was mentioned about the parade Saturday, March 8th. I don't think a lot of people know, but this year's parade president is Attorney Tom Gilbride. So, uh, I appreciate all the hard work and time and effort. I was actually president in 2000, probably the worst parade in the history of the parade. It poured rain from the minute we walked into the cathedral until the minute that parade ended. It was brutal. So we're, we're going to pray for great weather for Mr. Gilbride, Attorney Gilbride, for Saturday, March 8th. And I look forward to a great crowd, and our Scranton police, they do a tremendous job at protecting the citizens. There's a lot that goes into that, you know, and especially in light of what happened down in New Orleans. You can't be careful enough, and they, I know that, uh, they just put so much time and effort and planning into that one particular day, and it's greatly appreciated because it's supposed to be the rites of spring, and everybody wants to celebrate and have a great time and great family day, so we're looking forward to that. I met with the state rep Kyle Dunning today, and he informed me we got $350,000 for the repair of the bridge on South Webster Avenue between Maple Street and Elm Street, so that was great that we were able to get that funding, and I appreciate his efforts in doing that so that we can get that project moving forward. I mentioned the reassessment meetings and dates earlier. I appreciate the gentleman coming up with the information on the, the PUC. We're going to look into that. We did send a letter. I was thrilled that the PUC did decide to suspend. We'll investigate UGI rate hikes, so at least it puts the brakes on it for now and gives us the time to really take some serious action now. So I'm looking forward to that. And, you know, somebody talked earlier about a dictator. I mean, you want to talk dictators? How about an unelected South African billionaire firing veterans, federal workers, people that have access to very sensitive information? And it was brought up tonight. 21 of those people walked out of that Department of Government efficiency because they refused to go against their oath toward the Constitution of the United States. And furthermore, I find it completely appalling that the United States of America, the United States of America would, would call Vladimir Zelensky a dictator and stand up and support Putin, who clearly, everyone in the world knows, attacked, attacked Ukraine three years ago. It's, it's really appalling. So that's all I'll say about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. King. Mr. Schuester, any more sense of comments?
Yes, um, you know, I'd like to follow up Mr. King there. I'm, I'm very cut and dry. I don't get too excited up here very often, but I would like to congratulate Mr. Gilbride on his, um, being president of the parade. A lot of work goes into that parade, and it, it brings a lot into the economy of the city, so I do wish that Mr. Gilbride has good weather on his day. And I'd like to thank the Scranton Police Department, the DPW, and the Scranton Fire Department for that day as well, because like I said, a lot of planning goes into it. Mr. King mentioned about, you know, having people coming onto the route. I don't know if everyone understands that the DPW does help to keep individuals off the road. They keep their trucks out there, and then they, they do the cleanup afterwards, and they, they help a lot with the race that occurs before the parade. So again, hoping for good weather for March 8th. A couple things. I had some questions on some of the stormwater projects that are coming up. I did get some answers, so I had asked, there's projects coming up in East Mountain, Kaiser Valley, and also in Meadowbrook. I wanted to know if the property owners from those, uh, from those projects had been informed regarding the city easement requests? And they got the, the answer that I got back was that the property owners from items 5B and 6A from last week received the information regarding the city's easement requests in order to complete those projects. No start dates for the projects have been established yet, so I wanted to make sure that they knew when the start dates would occur. I also inquired about the Meadowbrook project as residents from Meadowbrook did meet with the city engineers on that project, and those residents were waiting back for answers because what was presented to them wasn't enumerated in the design work, and there was going to be changes that occurred, so I wanted, those residents were concerned that the changes make it to the design and they get a copy of the design before it starts. So I had asked about that, and the answer I got back was that Riley and Associates has compiled a list of adjustments to be made, made to those plans, including comments from DGS and DEP from the latest CD submission. They have a meeting scheduled with DGS and DEP on February 27th to discuss those comments, and they expect to complete that plan adjustment shortly thereafter. So after that meeting occurs on February 27th, those residents should get those updated plans to the Meadowbrook project. Also regarding the project in Kaiser Valley, some residents there reached out to me as well. They had some appraisers that came out to appraise the properties, getting ready for those easements, and they had a few questions. So I did reach out to Eileen Cipriani, and she had assured me that a walkthrough with the appraisers and with the city engineers of those properties could occur, so those residents have all their questions answered. So I, I thank her beforehand for that and hope to participate in that walkthrough. Some small things, Mr. Voldenberg, you're aware of some of the outstanding properties and things that I've sent over. I have some addresses on Airbnbs and some code enforcement items that are still pending. I would like to say thank you to the weekend inspection team. I had reached out to the weekend inspection team, and they got out to, to cover some code enforcement concerns over the weekend. So I asked them, Mr. Voldenberg, reach out to code enforcement that we could get a procedure for the weekend. So if council members get any kind of concerns in regard to permits and code enforcement over the weekend, that we have a smooth process working with them. I think it, that could go a long way. We'll know how to direct the residents, and we could help in the process.
I will, sir.
I did send an email to follow up on the railroad property off of Olive Street. I did get some residents' concerns over some of the encampments that were there along the railroad tracks and some of the refus and, and things that were along there. And Mr. Voldenberg and I spoke before the meeting about reaching out to the railroad and possibly DPW, about looking into some cleanup there. And then last week, we also spoke about meeting with the zoning board. The zoning board did come to council chambers to discuss some of their concerns with the 2023 ordinance, looking into some possible amendments to that ordinance, and we discussed reaching out to them and meeting with them at their next meeting. So there's communication that occurred there, and we should be moving forward with the possible amendments to that 2023 ordinance. I think that's all I have for the night.
Thank you, Mr. Schuester. Dr. Rathchild, do you have any motions or comments?
Yes, I do. Also wanted to congratulate Solicitor Gilbride for, for this year's upcoming Parade Day. I'm sure it'll be a great event. It's actually, it's taking place on my daughter's birthday this year, but we'll still be there celebrating with everyone, so we're keeping her birthday party to another day, but I'm sure she'll have a great time. And I did want to bring something up about Parade Day that I've noticed in past years. So I know that we've done the line painting, and I believe the last time that it was done, the green line painting through downtown for the, the path of the parade, that it stuck around for a very long time afterwards, and it did not look, I think, appealing for the city and even a bit confusing for, for drivers to have those lines in place. So I did want to ask if that is planned for this year, and if there's a plan for, you know, how long we can expect those lines to be present, if they're, if they're just going to be temporary, but if we could inquire some more about that, Mr. Voldenberg.
I will, Dr. Rathchild.
Great, thank you. And there had been some noise complaints I brought up a few weeks ago in the South Side section around the 1900 block of Prospect Avenue that we had forwarded to SPD, and I don't believe we've received any response. So if we can once again send them along, and I've, I've gotten some additional details too that I've forwarded to Mr. Voldenberg, so if we can.
I'll follow up, Dr.
Get a response from them. Thank you. And last week, there was a question that we had received a response on from Councilman, I believe it was from Councilman Smurl, about the blinded properties and the demolition list. So I see that we, we received a list of some of those properties here, but there were a few properties that I had in mind and I know that I've been asking about for quite a long time that I didn't see included on that, so I wanted to find out the status on a few of those. I could forward those addresses along. I know the one of them on, I believe, 419 Prescott Avenue that had a fire a few years ago now at this point. I'm wondering what the status is on that property, and there's another one in the Hill section too. I believe it's the, on the 800 block of Monroe Avenue, similar situation with a fire that's had boarded up windows for a few years now.
We did receive the first round. I'll follow up on those items.
Okay, great, thank you. That's all that I have.
Thank you, Dr. Rathchild.
Sorry, Mr. Smurl, could I jump in? Can, can we see, can we ask if there's several rounds and if we have other properties on the, I, I do see the first round.
We did ask for the complete list, but we received just the first round.
Okay.
I'll follow up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McCandless, do you have any motions or comments?
I had a couple. So of course, I also want to congratulate our very own St. Patrick's Day Parade Day Committee President, Solicitor Gilbride, and wishing a great day, but you know what? Parade Day is always a great day. So I'm, I'm expecting the same. So last week, I, in conjunction with Mr. Lucas here, we asked, we posed some questions, right? Important questions, valid questions. I'm going to start with the first one, and the first one was regarding reciprocal services provided by the Scranton Fire Department with outside municipalities. And Luzerne County, Mr. McCandless asks, is the SFD adequately staffed to take on additional responsibilities outside the city? Also, how many calls for fire apparatus have gone to Music Greenwood 24, uh, since 2024 to date? And will Scranton be reimbursed responses and services before and outside municipalities? So let's be clear on this. We all want to help our neighboring boroughs and cities that, that need our assistance. And I know the fire department wants to also, but they want to sit at the table. They have to discuss this. There needs to be discussion. And, you know, it can't affect the taxpayers, because like I said last week, you know, we have our own residents who pay taxes and being charged for fires, and we're not going to charge municipalities? So here's some of the responses I got. Regarding, I also asked, and another part of that question is regarding liability, what happens if a firefighter is injured while responding outside the community? And I referenced a poor captain who had a cardiac event. So here's the responses I got. One, the city of Scranton has provided an acceptable mutual aid for decades. It is imperative that the public safety entities share resources when needed to keep residents safe in their communities. That's great, but we got to remember our primary focus should be our, our citizens and. So it says, "The city has had long-lasting agreements in place for coverage in ransom towns, mutual aid to the Wilkes-Barre Scranton Airport and Toby Hannah RB Depot. The city has mutual aid resources identified in our box alarms from Chinchilla, Clark Summit, Taylor, Music, Old Ford, Elmhurst, Dixon City, Troop, Dumont, and many other departments." So if they have these longstanding agreements, could, could we get evidence of that? Or could we get documentation that they really do exist? Or is it just some type of verbal or oral agreement? All right, could we please?
I will, sir.
Thank you. "The city will continue to develop and update our agreements," so let's see them, "to share resource with our neighbors." Like I said, we want to help our neighbors. "The Scranton Fire Department has plans in place where we receive and provide mutual aid from the other agencies." Again, let's see the plans, let's see, let's have involvement with, with the people that are, the brave firefighters that have to go and, and do this. Make sure that we, like I said, they didn't answer the first part of the question. Are we adequately staffed to do this? So I don't know all the ins and outs of the fire department, but there's a couple words that I'm familiar with. So they can call backfill or call out, so my question is, um, so if we're, if we're adequately staffed, like, we didn't get an answer, so. But if we're, if we're assisting a fire in Moscow or Chinchilla or whatever, and our firefighters are called to do that, are we backfilled in the city? Which means, do we have adequate firefighters in case there's a fire here? Right? And if that's the case, And if that's the case, they have to be called in. So that means that we're going to incur some overtime, which is fine, but are we billing the other municipality that's using our services to at least pay for the overtime? Like, these agreements don't make any sense to me. Like I said, I'm in favor of helping our neighbors, and who isn't, right? Who wouldn't be? But it needs to make more sense fiscally, responsibility for the taxpayers, all you guys and us included. So I need some more answers. Just saying we have a mutual agreement forever, let's see them, please. And so a second part of this is... I asked about the retired firefighter to be allowed to sit on the pension board. We've been talking about this for two years, all right? We're going to have legislation tonight. Do I really want to vote for it? But I guess, you know, because, I'll talk more about it during 5B, but the solicitor, here's the answer I got. I'm like, okay, what's the deal with the seat? We've been talking about this almost two years. It's ridiculous. "So the city solicitor has been working with the pension board solicitor on this issue for some time. There are questions around the interpretation of the enabling legislation on procedure and terms of the appointment, appointed members of the pension board. The city wants to make sure the procedure and terms are clear and in compliance with the city code." Takes a couple of years to do that? I don't know about that. "Before moving forward with the appointment of Mr. Morgan." And we're constantly reminded that we have zero authority when it comes to this position, or appointing that position, or putting that person who's supposedly appointed in the seat. Just because we don't have zero authority doesn't mean we don't care. We all care up here. We keep asking the same questions, and to say that, you know, both solicitors are looking at the charter, and I know we don't have, we have zero authority, but Mr. Gilbryd, maybe help us out, just for our personal sake up here. Could you have your legal eye, take a look at the code, and see what terms that aren't clear, or what compliance looks like to have this person sit in that seat?
Well, I can tell you that right now, if you would like to hear it, Mr. McAndrew.
I can't, I'm sorry.
I said I can tell you now, if you would like to hear that.
All right, okay, what's the deal?
Under the code, when there's an opening on the pension board, the, one of the retirees, anyway, the union has to provide three names of retirees, of which the administration then is to select one to make that appointment. It does not say that the administration can appoint, it says it must appoint. And so for however long this position has been open, and I know it's longer than I've been serving as your solicitor, there has not been an appointment made.
All right, so I'm glad you have an understanding of it. Apparently, our city solicitor is in having an understanding, as you do, with regards to this process or procedure that's unclear to them. It's disturbing. It continues to be disturbing. It's not fair, but, you know, let's see what we can do about this. We implore the administration to do the right thing and see this individual. All right, so what else do I have? Let me see. I know I'm talking too long, but the gift card, I inquired more detail, God bless, but I didn't get any more details, just the same. Okay, but we didn't disperse them yet. You already got your answer. That's pretty much what I was told, so let's see what happens with that. And also, for maybe over a year, I inquired from residents up on Meadow Avenue with a traffic study. I guess it was done, and that's fine, and some lines were painted, but the arrows weren't painted, or the right and left arrows weren't painted, especially the one that was an ordinance that they weren't allowed to turn outside of that gas station. So could you please follow up with that and see what the status of that and what's the holdup?
I will, Mr. McAndrew.
All right, that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McAndrew. First thing, I was just shown from Councilman Bill King for the pothole, the pothole that's online for Scranton. If you type in on the internet, scrantonpotholes.com, and I typed it in, it comes right up. So for pothole reporting, you just go in there, you put the address in, where's the pothole in, the submission date, and I guess then they will send someone out to fill it. It's very simple. Scrantonpotholes.com, one word, no capital letters. So that is that. The demolition list, we were given the start of the demolition list. It seems we're going to do about four properties at a time instead of doing, they usually come out 12 at a time, but the first four, we have received, 231, 233 Harrison, 1610 Roslin, 701 Shaniav, and 2118 Cedar Avenue. The one that we had asked for, 1111 Blair, is on the demo list and will be part of another pool of properties to be done this year. So that one should be done this year. The other vacant property review committee that we were, I asked when we were going to be forming that, the date is March 31st at 3:00 PM in the Governor's Room, and that will be the start of that committee. The Old Out Club up on 307, we had asked, there's people asking what's going on there. The building looked like it was closed down again, but it is back under construction. There are currently five active permits, so everything's going on there. They said it just looks like nothing's going on because it's boarded up and they're inside for the winter. One more thing, Mr. Voldenberg, I'll give you this before I leave tonight. It is a, I guess, I was handed this before council started. It is a PA Fire Recovery Service. I think this is the same thing we've talked about over and over and over, and I don't know if it was taken care of, not taken care of, but I won't tell you the name, but it is, this person was actually in an accident, and he was the one that was hit. So, and he's gotten a bill for 88650 from the Fire Recovery Service. So can we send this to, I don't know whom is the proper one to get this, but if it's the mayor, or if it's the fire chief, and update us on what is actually happening? Are we going to get rid of that? We're not going to get rid of that, or what we're going to do? So evidently, people are getting it. I was given that when I was walking in.
I'll take care of it.
Thank you.
Mr. Smearl, I also had several of those that...
Yeah. So I said I would give it to you.
Mr. Gilbryd copies it.
Okay, I believe that is all for right now.
5B for an introduction in ordinance, amending filed to council number 92 of 2021, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a contract between the City of Scranton and Rubicon Global LLC to provide smart waste recycling data collection and operations management system for the Department of Public Works Solid Waste and Recycling Fleet. To amend the name to read Route Ware, Inc. Extend the term an additional 60 months and update the price schedule.
At this time, I entertain a motion that item 5B be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question.
On the question, I would like to inquire about, it's a renewable year by year, so I want to know if there's a timeline that if we decide we're not happy with this, can we pull out? Is it 30 days, 60 days, 90 days? I'd like to know, because it doesn't seem like it's written in that contract. And even though it is a five-year term, it's renewable annually, but it doesn't address, most contracts like that have an out, 60, 30, 90-day out. So I would appreciate, I want to introduce this tonight, but, and pretty much because we had the DPW director in here and the technology department and the business administrator to talk about it, and it seems like over the last three or four months, things have been working pretty well, and it seems like our DPW workers have embraced it, and it's finally doing what we wanted it to do and expected it to do. It's taken for quite a long time, but it seems like it's actually working. So if we could just get some answers on that, appreciate that. Turn to Gilbryd.
Mr. King, in regard to that, just you're aware, while we were here, I already sent an email out to the solicitor asking for that backup information, as well as any additional backup information that was not provided in the legislation itself.
That's efficient. That's why you're the president of the parade. Thank you.
So also on the question, we've been talking about Rubicon for quite some time. It's been three years. I could already tell you right now, I'm not happy with the product that we've received. When I was at the school district, we were also presented with a similar program, if you will, that never panned out there as well, and I had my concerns from the start. But after three years of not providing a service, I could say right now that I'm unhappy with it. As 5B goes up for a vote, I may move it forward to vote it down later, but I will definitely be voting no to extend a contract with Rubicon for another five years.
On the question, there are a couple of questions that I had when we had our caucus a few weeks ago regarding this contract, and I wanted to get some of the data on, like, the amount of go-backs that we've had and seeing if that's improved over time, and particularly with the change in routes with Rubicon, seeing a reduction in those go-backs, considering that was somewhere that was identified that we could help to save money with the usage of Rubicon. So I'd like to, again, request that. I believe Ms. Cipriani was going to get that information to us, but I haven't seen anything come through, and if there's any other updates and data based on the current Rubicon usage, that's appreciated, too. I know they told us that it is quite high and improved from before, but I'd like to see it in numbers.
I'll inquire, Dr. Rothschild.
Thank you.
So on the question, we've been talking about dealing with Rubicon for three years. The performance is horrible. Promised a million bucks, that never happened in savings. I'm a teacher, in the classroom, I don't give a student an A who earns a D. Will I give that student the opportunity to improve? Absolutely. Will I give first, second, third chances? Absolutely. But I will not give Rubicon Global, a big global company, an A, which translates to a five-year open renewal contract. We paid them tons of money, nothing to show for it. Now, even the administration who sat here in front of us not too long ago said, yeah, there was problems with it, oh, it was the rollout. It was, why are we going to reward this company with that type of performance, spending that type of money to extend poor performance? Sorry. That was the only option presented to us. I did a little research, I'm not an IT wizard or guru, but guess what? We were told here when they sat here that, oh, we brought all our own devices now. Great, right? So, and I did a little, like I said, a little research. Geotrackers, you can buy them, right? That's pretty much what's used in these trucks. And the devices that we kept were the iPads or the phones, or we bought our own. This could be done by us, and then all you have to do is utilize an app, not a big contract, it's an app. And that app might be $5 to $7, $8 a vehicle. So how many trucks are there? I don't know. It's got to be cheaper than this contract. I think we weren't provided with any other options except to support performance, performing company. So I'll be voting no to introduce it, I'll be voting no all the way through it. I wasn't happy with it, and I can't be happy with it moving forward, because there's nothing to be happy about. So that's all I have to say on the question.
Thank you, Mr. McAndrew. All those in favor of introductions signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
The ayes have it, and so moved.
5C for introduction, a resolution, waiving responsible contractor ordinance requirements for the procurement of Froud Avenue stormwater improvements.
At this time, I entertain a motion that item 5C be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
On the question, all those in favor of introductions signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it, so moved.
5D for introduction, a resolution, resolution for planned new land development located in the 1,000 block of Wheeler Avenue.
At this time, I entertain a motion that item 5D be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor of introductions signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it, so moved.
5E for introduction, a resolution, approving the intermunicipal transfer of a restaurant liquor license R15007, currently owned by The Grill at the Highlands LLC and located at 1 Highlands Boulevard, Suite 105, Archbald, Lackawanna County, Pennsylvania, 18403, to North Washington Avenue Properties LLC, doing business as Alter Bar, located at 116 North Washington Avenue, Suite 100, Scranton, Lackawanna County, Pennsylvania, 18503, as required by the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board.
At this time, I entertain a motion that item 5E be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question.
On the question, we had the opportunity to just briefly talk with the owners earlier, and I think it's exciting that they want to be able to expand their business into Scranton, you know, very popular and well-known business. So I think it's exciting that they want to come here and I'm supportive of the liquor license transfer.
On the question, this is also the same group that owns the Alter House up in Clark Summit, so they already have an extremely successful business, very reputable. So I'm excited also to see another business, another restaurant, come into the City of Scranton.
So I'll also echo my colleagues while we're speaking on the question. I'm happy to see that they're moving their business into Scranton. As Mr. King said, they have a great reputation and they provide a great service, and thank you for coming to the city, and it was nice that the owners were here tonight and we had a chance to speak with them in caucus.
Thank you. All those in favor of introductions signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, so moved.
I make a motion to table item 5E.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor and a second to table item 5E. This piece of legislation is being tabled to allow for advertisement of a public hearing to be held Tuesday, March 11th, 2025, at 5:45 PM. On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, so moved.
Sixth order, 6A, reading by title, filed to council number 58, 2025, in ordinance, approving and authorizing the acquisition of easement agreements, deed in lieu of condemnation or otherwise of the necessary rights, franchises, licenses, easements, or titles of land required for permanent and temporary easements in order to complete the Kaiser Valley Flood Protection Project, Group One of easements, and authorizing the filing of a declaration of taking pursuant to Section 302 of the eminent domain code, if required.
You've heard reading by title of item 6A. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that item 6A pass reading by title.
Second.
On the question.
On the question, as I said in caucus, I had a chance to speak with some of the residents that reached out. They did receive letters of communication. They had some questions as a walkthrough was supposed to happen around the property, so I did reach out to Eileen Cipriani, and as I said before, I'd like to thank her beforehand for getting a meeting together with these residents that will be coming up in the future to take a walkthrough and have some other questions answered before the project starts.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
Seventh order, 7A, for consideration by the Committee on Public Works for adoption, filed to council number 57, 2025, approving and authorizing the acquisition by easement agreements, deed in lieu of condemnation or otherwise of the necessary rights, franchises, licenses, easements, or titles of land required for permanent and temporary easements in order to complete the East Mountain Stormwater and Drainage Improvement Project, Group One of easements, and authorizing the filing of a declaration of taking pursuant to Section 302 of the eminent domain code, if required.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Public Works?
As chairperson for the Committee on Public Works, I recommend final passage of item 7A.
Second.
The question, roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Smearl?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7A legally and lawfully adopted.
7B for consideration by the Committee on Public Works for adoption, resolution number 180, 2025, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to approve the execution and submission of the grant reimbursement agreement between the City of Scranton and the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for funds estimated to be approximately $1,110,200 from the multimodal transportation fund grant to be used towards the replacement of the Ash Street Bridge.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Public Works?
As chairperson for the Committee on Public Works, I recommend final passage of item 7B.
Second.
On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Smearle?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7C legally and lawfully adopted.
7C, previously tabled, for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, resolution number 177, 2025, approving the intermunicipal transfer of a restaurant liquor license R. 6234, currently owned by Dawn's Ruby, Inc., doing business as Dawn's Ruby Room, and located at 303 Chestnut Street, Blakely, Lackawanna County, Pennsylvania, 18452, to the Roof at Oppenheim LLC, located at 409 Lackawanna Avenue, Apartment 509, Scranton, Lackawanna County, Pennsylvania, 18503, as required by the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board.
As chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item 7C. On the question.
Second.
On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Smearle?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7C legally and lawfully adopted.
7D, previously tabled, for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, resolution number 179, 2025, appointment of the City of Scranton's Business Administrator to the position of Chief Administrative Officer of its police, fire, and non-uniform pension plans.
As chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item 7D.
Second.
On the question.
On the question, Mr. Gilbride, I'm going to put you on the spot here. When we talked about the retired Scranton firefighter on the pension board, the language that was used in the city code is must. Is that the correct language?
I don't have it in front of me, but I believe so. It's mandatory.
In legal terms, the word must, can you give us a significance of the word must?
Yeah, well, it's different than can, right? Can means that they are allowed to. Must means they.
Have to by law, right?
Yeah.
It also differs from may.
Yeah. And, so, yes, there is a significance to the word.
So, the mayor has to seat this retired Scranton firefighter by law to the pension?
By law.
Okay. Just as we have to, by law, appoint.
Well, we don't have a part to play in this process, but yes, if the, if the code provided for that, then yes, we would have to follow the law as well.
Okay. Thank you.
So, on the question, I understand all that. There was a finding that this position wasn't in place. And, and my understanding is, it wasn't noticed the past few audits. All right. So, I, who am I to stand in the way of, you know, a finding and, and holding off on, because we tabled it last week, or holding off saying, you know, I was, you know, you can wait a week or two because the seat we're looking for on the pension board is waiting three years? So, how is this fair? We want all these, these authorities and boards and whatever, these, these committees to all operate the way they should. So, Solicitor Gilbride just said, we must. I also think we must have, or the firemen and us, we must have a seat at that table that the administration keeps saying, well, we got to look at it and see how it relates to the code for three years? It's just, it doesn't make any sense to me, and I still have a problem with it. That's all I have.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Smearle?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7D legally and lawfully adopted.
Eighth order, 8A, resolution number 177, 2025.
This resolution was taken from the table and placed in seventh order for a final vote this evening.
8B, resolution number 179, 2025.
This resolution was taken from the table and placed in seventh order for a final vote this evening.